Welcome you to the regular board meeting of the Village of Hanover Park. My name is Herb Porter. I'm the deputy mayor and I'm sitting in, in the place of our mayor Rodney Craig, who is attending and representing us at the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, D.C. It's an honor and a pleasure to sit here in this seat and to preside over this meeting, especially in view of the wonderful winter that we're having, that we're two-thirds of the way through January, and we haven't had a major snow event or weather event, freezing cold and snow, and to find some wood to knock on so that I don't jinx us all and, you know, we wake up to six inches of snow and below zero weather, so, uh, but yeah, so welcome, and we will begin the meeting without any further ado. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, trustee Kemper?
Here.
Trustee Priggy?
Here.
Trustee Husani?
Here.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Here.
Trustee Porter?
Here.
And trustee Bankoli is on her way. She's just running a few minutes later.
Okay, we have a quorum, and would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will now open our public hearing. A proposal to establish special service area ten. I'm sorry, the acceptance of the agenda. So moved.
Seconded.
We've been motioned and seconded, all in favor of accepting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is accepted. We now move to the public hearing. A proposal to establish special service area ten, the GW subdivision northeast corner of Lake Street and Bartel's Road. Yeah, may we have a motion to open the public hearing? So moved. It's been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing to consider the establishment of special service area ten. We'll begin with an explanation of the purpose of the public hearing and the special service area. May we have a roll call on the motion?
Yes. Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bankoli?
This is for the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Priggy?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
And trustee Porter?
Yes. It's noted that trustee Bankoli has now joined the deas.
So this is, um, the public hearing for special service area number ten. Back in October of 2022, the village board passed an ordinance proposing the creation of the special service area number ten. At that time, the village board, in that ordinance, directed that a notice be sent out to all the persons who had paid the real estate taxes on the property in the preceding year, and if none were paid, or if we couldn't ascertain that, then we checked the recorder's office to find out who owned the property and sent a notice in that regard. So there was a requirement that, um, that, uh, that's what the ordinance had required. The reason why we're having this public hearing is because in 2021, the village approved a subdivision known as the GW subdivision. As part of that subdivision, there was a special use granted for the subdivision. The special use provisions included among them a provision that the village could create a special service area for this particular geographical area. Also, the developer had developed a covenants and a declaration for the subdivision in which the owner and the declarant signed and agreed also that there could be a special service area number ten created over the entire area of the GW subdivision. And this subdivision, by the way, is at Lake and, and Bartel's Road. It is the northeast corner. It's where all the new development is occurring. And so in those declarations, as I said, they also agreed that this special service area could be created. The purpose of it really is to provide a mechanism, sort of as a backup, to the owners and the declarants and the prospective property owners association's obligations to provide certain stormwater facilities there, including the maintenance of those facilities, and also walkways, pathways, sidewalks, sewage, storm sewage, storm sewers, and the maintenance of all of those. And so this basically provides a mechanism, if the board approves it, so that if the declarant or any of the lot owners or the association who has an obligation under the declaration and under our ordinances to maintain these various things, or even reconstruct them if necessary, if necessary, if they fail to do that, this provides a mechanism for the village to recover through taxation the cost of doing that kind of work. And, uh, and the particular lot owners out there would have to pay then an additional sum of money on the real estate taxes in order to accomplish that. Now, in order to have this special service area, as I mentioned, notices had to be sent out and published, and the village clerk did publish in the Daily Herald a notice in December, I believe, of 2022. Do you want to explain what you did concerning that?
Uh, yes, we sent the notice to the Daily Herald, I believe it was the 27th of December, so that it was published at least 15 days prior to this hearing.
Right, and then in addition to that, I believe there were seven notices that were mailed out to all the property owners. I don't know, did anybody here receive any of those notices? So there are some people here that are responding to the notices. And, uh, and in those notices, there was an explanation of what the special service area entailed. So one of the things that's possible is that there could be objections filed by people concerning the creation of the special service area. They would be filed with the village clerk, and I don't know if any have them.
We have not received any.
All right, so there are no objections that have been filed. And then there is a provision on the agenda for persons who want to be heard, to be given an opportunity to come forward, present testimony, and ask any questions or examine any witnesses. Did you want to, anybody want to do that? No question?
We were given an explanation prior to coming in.
Oh, good. Who gave it to you? Okay, all right. Well, that's fine. So then there's no one here who wishes to speak concerning this. And F on the public hearing notices is a determination of all protests and objections. Since there are none, there would have not be any necessity to have any determination concerning any protests and objections. So if there's no one else that has anything, I have nothing further to ask.
Okay. Thank you. Hearing that there are no protest or objections, I ask for a motion to close and adjourn the public hearing on the establishment of special area ten.
Right, and so the motion in the minutes needs to be a motion to close and finally adjourn. So it is important that that finally also be included because that's statutory.
So noted, to close and finally adjourn the public hearing on the establishment of special service ten. So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Bankoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggy?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And trustee Kemper?
Yes.
And I might also add that further down in the agenda, there is an ordinance on the agenda which would establish the special service area if passed by the village clerk.
All right, that takes us to item number five on the agenda. Presentations, I do have two. Okay, our first presentation is a certificate of appreciation from the Village of Hanover Park that we are giving to Mission Church, and we would ask for our village clerk, Kristi Merrill, could you please come down and receive this certificate? This is an appreciation for your support for the Village Tree Lighting Event and the gifts for the youth that you attended. We were so honored to have Mission Church be such an integral part of our tree lighting service. The church went above and beyond the call of duty, the gifts that you supplied for the children, the toys, it just seemed to be an inexhaustible amount of toys. Every child received a toy. Not only did they receive a toy, they got to go through and select the toy that they wanted, which is kind of unheard of in a toy giveaway. So you and, uh, as a representative of Mission Church ought to be highly commended for, uh, this fantastic civic contribution that you made. So, uh, on behalf of the Village of Hanover Park, we present you and Mission Church with this certificate of appreciation.
Thank you so much.
Hold on there, young lady. We also have, uh, an additional presentation to give to you, Kristi, for your work on the Village Tree Lighting Event as the clerk and for all of the hard work, the hours that you put in to put that event together. I think it was our best one yet. We've done tree lighting for a number of years, and I think that this really set the bar high for all upcoming ceremonies and events like this. So again, on behalf of the village, we want to give you this personal token of our appreciation for your dedication to the village event.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, trustee Porter.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. That's why it wasn't on the table.
Surprise.
You're not an easy person.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, in our agenda, we're at item number six, which is our town hall session. Anyone persons wishing to address the public body must register prior to the call of order. Please note that public comment is limited to five minutes. Do we have anyone signed up for town hall?
I do have a few, so I'm going to ask Ms. Hillary, I believe it is, to come on up.
I'm sorry, can you turn that mic back around?
Congratulations. I know I'm short. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for letting me speak for just a couple of minutes. I just want to follow up, even though it's technically not on the agenda. Could you state your name? With the, I'm sorry?
Could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Hillary Schneider. Thank you. I am actually a resident of Bartlett, not Hanover Park. I used to be a resident of Hanover Park for 13 years before they built Prairie View, and we wanted our young son to be able to walk to school, so we moved a mile away, so to speak. Anyway.
Is he still in school?
Uh, no, he's.
Come on back.
He's 28 now. Unbelievable. Anyway, um, I'm here about the proposed firehouse, and I, what I asked was originally, when the discussion came up, was could you please do your due diligence and do a noise survey and a traffic survey? This is something that should be done to make sure, to identify what's going to happen with the townhomes and your neighbors right around the fire station. When the, the way the design is, with the fire engines coming straight out onto Schick, you are literally sending that noise directly across the street to the townhomes and the condominiums. Little children live in that area, senior citizens live in that area. It's a very high sound level. Granted, it doesn't last long, but it really is, it's going to rocket right over there. And so I'm asking for that survey, just so we can figure out whether we need to have a noise barrier there, or something to accommodate, to block it, so that the children can still go out and play during the summer months, during the spring and fall, you know, when they're outdoors. People can continue to enjoy the outdoors. And the same thing with, not with enjoying the outdoors, but a traffic study to make sure that during the rush hours especially, that those engines, the fire engines and the ambulances are going to be able to get out of your driveway. I live right off of Mayflower, and you don't get to that, you, that fire engine and the ambulances are going to have to make that turn to go, if, assuming they're going east, make that right turn to go east, and it's going to be a little ways before they get to that turn lane on Mayflower. So if you're driving that road on rush hour, it is packed. It is bumper to bumper to go from County Farm further west past Mayflower till you get to Gerber and the different roads. And my concern is that that engine, even if you draw those hash marks on the street, people don't always follow that, especially in rush hour. They're not going to. They want to push to get through those stoplights as fast as possible, and that means they're going to be blocking the engines. So I'm asking that you also do a traffic study to make sure that you're going to be able to get that engine in and out safely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, is Bruce here?
Yeah.
Come on up, Bruce.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bruce Suter.
Good evening.
I've been a resident of Hanover Park for over 30 years, never moved to Bartlett or anywhere else. I want to address this area from Sterns to Lake Street on County Farm Road that's been changed to a 30 mile an hour limit. I understand that in the winter, you know, right at the end, it's curvy and that it's, people feel it's dangerous. However, um, if any, I would challenge anybody to sit around there and see if anybody is going 30, including our police officers. Nobody goes 30. So I would like to propose, like in Chicago, in the winter along Lakeshore Drive, they lower the speed limits because of the lake and the water and everything, so I would like to propose that approximately maybe from May 1st until October 30th or 31st, that be put back to 40 miles an hour. Again, I think it's, I understand the purpose to slow everybody down in the winter, you don't skid in the curvy area, but nobody, I've never seen anybody going 30. And I've seen, as I said, even our own esteemed distinguished police officers going at least 40, so I just want to propose that.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
And Ms. Erin Lopez, come on up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Erin Lopez, resident of Hanover Park, and I just want to say a couple of words about the agenda item eight, A-12, specifically the parking on Briarwood. I knew that when I bought the house on the corner, it would be higher traffic than if the house was inside of the block, but I did not know I'd be signing up for a street that I could not drive down, let alone a school bus, garbage truck, um, a fire truck, anything, a snowplow that can't get through because there are cars constantly parked on both sides of the streets. So it affects me personally, so I would appreciate if that would get passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Anybody else wishing to speak at town hall at this time?
My name is Rosio Beleno. I've been a residence, actually, since I've been born, about 30-plus years. I actually want to add on to her request. I live on Astor Avenue, the third house down right after her, and we know that Fiesta Market is very trafficky in Briarwood, so definitely, I think, as request would be that one side, they do no parking. What I've known is actually in my, my friend is the owner of Famous Fades, which is the business right, not even on Briarwood, but behind, in front of it, they park there, which is fine, but like she mentioned, just one side of it would be greatly appreciated because, uh, and I'm sure you guys have reports of all the, all the hit and run, there has been hit and runs, but not all, but also reports for the cars being hit from their mirrors, and they even know because every single car that parks there folds their, um, their mirrors, so I definitely agree, and I would request the same. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for town hall?
Okay, that concludes our town hall. Item number seven, the village president report, in the absence of the village president, I'll insert my trustee report in, in this area. And I just want to bring to the attention of the board that I've had a very eventful time since our last meeting. First of all, officially Happy New Year, since this is our first meeting of the, of the new year, so Happy New Years to all, and good to see that you all made it through, and, and everybody seems to be doing fine. There've been a lot that's gone on since then, and I won't try to go through all of that, I'll just go through some of the recent events. I had the pleasure of attending several Martin Luther King celebration events over the weekend. A couple of them were very exceptional. One was at Larkin High School where we previewed a film called Invented Before You Were Born, a fascinating film about a local family that was enslaved in western Kentucky and whose owner upon his death, prior to President Lincoln passing the proclamation, the Emancipation Proclamation, emancipated the slaves on his plantation, 64 of them in all. And from that family, one of our, one of our area residents, Ms. Tracy O'Neil Ellis, who's a former U-46 board member, has genealogy and heritage that goes back to the Bibbs family that was emancipated, and it tells about their travails and how the white family and the black family have since found each other and have reconciled and reunited and have come to terms with their history and are forming a very dynamic bond and union between the Bibbs family, which now has black descendants and white descendants, and just a, a, a beautiful story of humanity and how they've been able to put aside a lot of the, the pains and the anguish of the past, not ignoring them, acknowledging them, and moving forward. So it's a wonderful film. It's entitled, "Invented Before You Were Born," and I believe you can, on YouTube, you can find reference to, to that film, as they're seeking to get a distribution deal for that, for that film. I also attended the Hoffman Estates Prayer Breakfast. They do a wonderful job every year with their Martin Luther King breakfast. The featured speaker was Hassan Liggins, a young man, an author and film producer from Chicago South Side. He gave a riveting presentation on the dreams of Martin Luther King and what that means to a young millennial growing up in today's society, and how they interpret that, and how they tried to honor those wishes of Dr. Martin Luther King with, with solid action, rather than just giving voice to it. It was a great presentation. Christian Tabernacle Choir sung, and they brought the house down with the rousing gospel renditions, and we were clapping our hands and stomping our feet, and we had a really, really good time at that event. I've been, had the pleasure of attending several conferences and committee meetings representing the village. As you all know, I sit on the Board of SEDA, which had their, held their regular meeting and Housing Authority of Cook County, both of which are doing really instrumental work here in the northwest suburbs, working on such critical issues, such as making sure that the, uh, the disadvantaged people in our communities have access to resources that will help them provide the quality of life that everyone wants to give their families and their children, providing qualities such as the, uh, the WIC Center actually, which operates right here in Hanover Park, upstairs from our POC Center, right on Lake Street, which provides resources for women and infant care, a, a great resource center and a great help to Hanover Park, and we're really honored to have that source of, of help in, in our community. And the Housing Authority of Cook County, which is dedicated to alleviating the housing shortages and housing crisis, providing low-income housing and also providing, making sure that we have quality housing, but also housing for disabilities, so that those suffering from mental and physical disabilities. Sometimes when we talk about the housing crisis, we tend to think merely about low-income housing or giving housing to the homeless. We don't always focus on our veterans who may be suffering from mental health issues, others who may be homeless because of mental health issues, and also those who are suffering from disabilities that need special housing requirements in their homes, such as ramps and access and, and those type of things. These are all issues that are taken up by the, uh, the Housing Authority of Cook County, and I know that they work closely with a lot of our governmental organizations to try to find solutions, equitable solutions, that municipalities can put in place to alleviate and mitigate some of these situations. We sat in, I sat in on the Legislative Committee Conference today that was attended by Senator Mary Edley Allen, Representative Michelle Musman, Representative Dan Dietrich, and Representative Kevin Olick, Olickell, Allickel, I think is how you pronounce his name. And tomorrow I'll attend a similar program with Senator Ann Gillespie, Senator Dan DeWitt, Representative Bob Morgan, newly elected Representative Mary Beth Canty, and Nabila Sayed, the first Southeast Asian woman elected to the Illinois General Assembly, who I had the pleasure to meet at the swearing in of the 103rd General Assembly, a wonderful young woman, and I'm sure she'll be an asset to the, to the body. Some of the issues discussed at this were, again, the Safety Act and the actual enforcement of that act, it's, which has been delayed as they go back and deal with some legal challenges to that. The police and fire pension was also discussed, as there is a concerted effort to enact a, a, a bill that would allow the amortization of the pension to be lengthened from the 40-year amortization that now exists to a 50-year amortization, which in some cases has been estimated will save municipalities. estimated will save municipalities anywhere from fifteen to nineteen million dollars over the, the course of, of that ten-year course. So it's a very important issue, and that was brought up with the state legislators and representatives to, to let them know that, that's something that municipal leaders have an interest in. The LGDF is always constantly at the forefront of any discussion that we have with our legislators. They're really pushing to see if they could even give to increase the LGF to eight percent, even if we don't get back to the original ten percent, but to get back to an eight percent distribution of that fund. I know there's a lot of pushback and a lot of resistance in the General Assembly, but hopefully with some of the new members who don't have a historical context as to how this all came about, that we may be able to see a turn of, of opinions on that and, and see some movement on that. That would mean a lot to our bottom line, as I'm sure Remy and Juliana can attest to, if we could have those funds returned to our general fund. Early childhood education was also discussed. I think it's very important that we continue to push for early childhood education in our communities. One of the ways that we combat poverty and we combat a lot of the social ills is by having an excellent education system and excellent education, and that certainly begins with early education, K through twelve, and even Head Start and, and other programs of that type. So, very eventful time, those are the ones that I will mention to you, I won't bore you with the other things that, that I attended, but do know that all of us here on the DAS are actively involved in representing the village at all of these type of events, and when we go, we go as, as spokespeople to listen and to give input, so that the village of Hannover Park can always be on the cutting edge of legislative things that are happening, both here locally and in Springfield in the General Assembly. And with that, I will move to, a move to approve by omnibus, omnibus vote, the items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Call the roll.
So I have a question. So, so how do I ask questions on things that were already approved in the consent agenda?
You can remove them at this time.
I can remove them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, then would you reverse your, would you reverse your?
No, no, you can do it now.
I can still remove them?
You do it while I'm.
Okay, okay. So can I remove eight A five, eight A eleven, and then eight A twelve?
Eleven and twelve.
They are removed.
Thank you.
They are removed.
No, that's really not here.
Okay, it's been seconded, motioned and seconded. Call the roll, proceed.
So on, on the consent agenda, there will be eight A one through eight A four, eight A six through eight A ten, and eight A thirteen through eight A sixteen.
All right. Trustee Priggy?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
And Trustee Bankoli?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Item eight A five. Motion to approve a purchase order to DND Maintenance for snow removal from the village cul-de-sacs for an amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, and to authorize the village manager to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you. So I understand that DND Maintenance was the only company that put, that submitted a bid for this contract, and it, it makes me just want to have more information about our bid process, and why it is that we are seeing such a low number when it comes to companies bidding, when we have so many companies in the state of Illinois that can provide these services.
So if I can ask John to answer my question.
Okay, so for this contract, how we, for most of our contracts, how we advertise is we put it into paper and then we post it online on our website for contractors to view and have an opportunity to bid on it. From our website, it's then picked up by bidding companies that then, you know, contractors sign up for a subscription service where they get notified of certain types of contracts. So all of these contractors usually find out through that process. We also reach out to contractors who have done the jobs previously, and if we've been satisfied with, with their work, we'll reach out to them and say, hey, we've got this on our website, if you're interested, please bid on it.
And so, well, going back, so thank you for that, that overview. Which paper do we post in?
The Daily Herald, I believe.
Is that the only paper that we post in?
I believe so.
Okay. And then this company, I know it was mentioned that we had worked with them previously, did we reach out to them and notify them about this contract because we had already previously worked with them, or is this?
Well, they, they were under contract before, so their contract was expiring, so then they are aware, acutely aware that their contract's expired and they're, you know.
Okay, okay. So my concern is, is that snow removal services is something that's common in the state of Illinois, and I'm concerned that there's no competition, and that we are now giving a contract to a company, a three-year contract to a company, when we haven't received any sort of information about what other companies, what, what other companies can provide us. And so now, we would be locked into a contract for three years, based solely on the fact that, well, I shouldn't say based solely, but based on the fact that they're the only company that submitted a bid, and it might not necessarily mean that this is the most cost-effective way to go about it, or the best company to work for, to work with us.
Just for a point of clarification, I'm looking at the memo from the village manager and the public works director. It says that the bids were opened on August twenty-fifth, and that the board approved the contract on October sixth. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this has been before the board in October?
Yes.
And that was for a three-year contract, and it was approved, and are you just asking for the purchase order to pay the first year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
I mean, I'm just digesting the information that Attorney Paul provided, provided the So we are, I thought you said that, so maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding this. So are we not re-upping their contract?
This, that's not what this is in front of you right now. This is just approval of the purchase order. We've already signed the contract and made the agreement with them.
So the contract's not expiring?
Not right now, no.
I thought you mentioned that. Okay. Well, then that is my mistake. I do apologize. I, I just wanted to make sure that for competition's sake, that we are working with the best companies and getting the best price. So thank you for the clarification. That concludes my questions.
Okay. Do we go to item? No, six A five. I'm sorry, yeah.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bankoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggy?
Yes.
And Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Item eight A eleven. Motion to pass resolution authorizing signatories for the village of Hannover Park, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions?
Yes, so, so I, I removed this from the consent agenda because when I read through this, it read as though we, as a village, allow for two people to have this privilege, but four people were listed on the memo. And so I understand that that is a separate issue from updating who has these signing privileges from our previous clerk to our current clerk. And so I, I just would like, and so I will say that I spoke with our, our village manager, who did provide me with additional information, and just provided me with the section that is referred to in the resolution, and just for the record, section two dash three four seven C of chapter two of the municipal code. But when I went to just review that additional information, it, it did state that two people, per our ordinance, two people are given this privilege, but it's looking like in practice we have four people with this privilege. So I just, so, one moment. So I would like to just verify that I'm not reading this incorrectly, and.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so we have section two dash three four seven, which is chapter two, section three four seven, and it's in the latter part of it. It says that there are, there is a requirement that you get one signature from one group of people, and another signature from another group of people. The two groups are divided between elected officials and appointed officials. So it requires that one of the appointed officials sign for any kind of transaction, and one of the elected officials. Then it goes on to say who among the appointed officials are within the group, and who among the elected officials are within the elected officials group. And basically, among the elected officials, it's the mayor and the village clerk. Among the appointed officials, it's the village manager and the finance director. And then in order for there to be a transaction, one from each group must sign.
Okay. So I do understand that, and thank you for the, for that additional explanation. But where in our code does it state that we will allow four people this privilege?
It actually says in the code.
So where is that?
That, that there's a group of two, that is the village clerk and the mayor, and there's a group of two that, and I think in the village code, it says it's the village manager and, yeah, and.
And the finance director.
And the finance director. It might have said the assistant finance director at some time. But at any rate, so we, the banks require to know who are those people by name. And so this resolution sets forth who they are.
Okay, so just to clarify, and I'm just going to read this, just to make sure that I'm, this is correct. So it says the authorized signatories for the village accounts at designated depositories shall be two.
Keep reading.
So one of the village president or the village clerk, and one of the village manager or the finance director.
Right. So it's one of each of those groups can constitute the two. So it could be the mayor and the finance director, it could be the mayor and the clerk, I mean, and the village manager, or it could be, you know, the finance director of the mayor, or the finance director and the village clerk.
Okay.
I mean.
So then why wouldn't we update the ordinance so that it explicitly states four?
We only require two.
Right, but right now, we're giving four people the authority.
But the, but the ordinance is very clear. This resolution even says that whoever gets this resolution, he has to follow that ordinance.
I understand. But the, but the resolution has a word in it that the ordinance currently doesn't.
Oh, what is the word?
And the resolution has the word four in it, whereas if you look at our municipal code, the word four is nowhere to be found, which means that in practice, we are allowing four people this privilege, but in our current municipal code, that is not the case. And I'm, I'm happy to be corrected.
It does, because it says two and two, so.
It says two of the four.
Four.
But it doesn't say four.
I understand, but, but it, but the math says two and two, okay? So with, with that, okay, so in, in, in other forms of stuff like, like in my Knights Columbus Council, okay, we require two signatures, and that's what it is, two signatures need to be on the check. That signature can be from the grand knight, the deputy grand knight, and the treasurer and any of the, and two of any of the three trustees, okay? So those, all those names have to be given to the bank with their signatures, so they know who they are. So at any point in time, a check needs to be distributed or written or deposited, any, any two of those five or six that we have can sign it to be deposited. Basically, that's what it's saying here. So any two of those four can sign the check to be deposited. Trustee Bankoli, if I could just, just, maybe this will help you. When it says shall be two, and then it says one, if you look at that, and, and I know it's not there, and, and, but what it actually is doing is that, that one of the village president or the village clerk is almost in parentheses. So it's not each of those persons, it's one of those two. So that's the, the one, and then when you add the other one, which is one of the village manager and finance director, if you look at that as being in a parentheses, then that one and that one equals two. And even though the, the, within that, it's four people, but it's two actual items. It's one, the elected officials, and then one, the appointed officials, two representing each group. So it's one and one, but it's two individuals representing each group, and that's how you get to the four. So it's only two. It's only two, and only two signatures are required. I don't know if that helps, but that's how I saw it, and that kind of helped me kind of understand.
No, that does help, that does help. But then why would we, why wouldn't we just clarify that in the initial ordinance? Why would we?
Because four signatures are required for the bank to have on record.
But what I'm saying is that shouldn't we make sure that there's no part of the code that should be left up to interpretation? Shouldn't, shouldn't the current resolution that we are voting on match our current vote?
I think it does.
Just word for word, so that there's no issues?
The ordinance sets forth one of the two and plus one of the two, and this resolution says, as you pointed out, two of the four authorized signatories, comma, but only as provided for in section two, three, four, seven, C of chapter two. And that requires that it be one of those two that are named there, and one of the two that are posted. So I think it's all consistent.
So it's to be assumed?
No, it's all consistent. There's nothing to assume.
Okay, even though the word four isn't in there?
The word four is, is in that where?
Is in the resolution, but it's not in our municipal code.
Right, but it says two of four, but only as provided for in the ordinance. So, so the bank could not honor, should not honor, a signature of two of the elected officials, and they should not honor the signature of two of the appointed officials.
So there is, that is clear, that would hold up in, in terms of like legal matters? Okay. So I, I raised this because I, one, transparency is important, but two, it's, I viewed it as some mismatched to vote on a resolution that has wording that's different than what's, than what we currently have as code. It, it just, it seemed incorrect. And when we're thinking about the village as a whole and how we can protect ourselves, especially when it comes to money, but also when, when we're being transparent, or.
Right, and I think, and I think in order to buttress that, that's why the where as was added to the resolution. The where as states exactly what the ordinance requires. The where as states exactly what the ordinance requires. So whoever looks at this doesn't have to go back and look at our municipal code. They can just go back and look at that where as, because it's very specific. It says it provides for this in the very first paragraph.
Would it be, would it be more clear if it's the authorized signatories for the village account at designated depository shall be two of the following four? One from the village president or village clerk and one from the village manager? Would that help? Is that of the four?
I think that would match the resolution that we're trying to vote on.
Because I, I understood it and they explained it, but if you think that that would help, it's just of the four.
But regardless, regardless, I, I appreciate the additional information. So, yeah. Go ahead. I'm finished.
Okay. Call for question. Madam, clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Upstain.
Trustee Brighi?
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Let me go back to my agenda. 8812. Item 8812, move to pass an ordinance amending section 6111, 1328 of chapter 52, 62 of the municipal code of Hannover Park by modifying the no parking regulations on Astor Avenue, Briarwood Avenue, and Briarwood Street.
So moved.
The motion is seconded.
The, we have a map that can be put up on the monitors for this item, and Kevin is going to walk through the proposed changes so that we can answer any questions if there's a clue, so.
Officer Penny, you can proceed.
Okay. The current map that's in front of you shows on the, the current parking restrictions currently in effect by village ordinance. On the far left of the screen, you're going to see the no parking currently, 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM on the east side of Astor Avenue, from Narcissus up to 200 feet south of Briarwood Avenue. Additionally, on the left side of the street, there is currently no parking at any time.
Officer Penny, could you just do something when you say east side? If you refer to the other side, can you say the west side of the street so that we don't get left and right?
Okay. Okay. I apologize. On the west side of Astor Avenue, we're actually just looking at cleaning up the language that's in the ordinance. We're not actually expanding any, no parking currently by village ordinance. On Astor Avenue, on the west side, there's no parking 100 feet north of Narcissus Avenue on Astor Avenue, as well as on the west side of Astor Avenue from Briarwood Avenue to Narcissus Avenue. In all locations, wherever the curb line on said west side of Astor Avenue is less than 18 feet is measured from the center line of Astor Avenue. Additionally, parking is prohibited on the east side from 270, 200 feet south of Briarwood Avenue to Narcissus Avenue from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The proposed language that we're recommending for Astor Avenue would be no parking on the east side of Astor Avenue. Extend, we're extending it down on the east side of the street from 200 feet to 270 feet to align with the off-street parking across from Jennifer's Daycare. Additionally, on the west side of Astor Avenue would be designated no parking except for the designated off-street parallel parking. We are recommending, let me switch to the proposed, for the current parking regulations on Briarwood Avenue, as you'll see, there's no current parking restrictions on Briarwood Avenue until you hit John Quill Avenue. There's no parking on Briarwood Avenue currently from John Quill East to Briarwood Street. We are recommending that the south side of Briarwood Avenue from the Westerly Corporate Limits to Briarwood Street be designated as no parking. As you'll see on this map. Additionally, we're looking to add the north side of Briarwood Avenue from the Westerly Corporate Limits to Astor Avenue. On Briarwood Street, on the far east, the, the far east side of the map, street runs north-south. Currently, there's no parking from Briarwood Avenue to Hollywood Avenue. Then there is some additional off-street parking designated, no parking on school days, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, just north of Greenwood. There is currently a gap of approximately 100 feet from Hollywood Avenue to that designated off-street parallel parking. We're looking at designating the entire west side of Briarwood Street from Briarwood Avenue to Greenwood Avenue as no parking except for the designated off-street parallel parking spaces.
Could you go back to the proposed?
Sure.
May I, please? Thank you. So, so just to clarify, so green is?
The green is currently what's in effect. That is the no parking 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM on the east side of Astor Avenue.
Okay. So that entire, the long line is Briarwood, right?
Correct.
Okay. So where are we, so approximately, so I know that in the memo that you provided, it was very, that the police department provided, it was very comprehensive, so thank you. In some areas, you mentioned like this street will lose three or four spaces, or this street will lose X amount of spaces. Do we have like an, an approximate number for the amount of spaces that will be lost?
On Briarwood, of Briarwood Avenue?
Or maybe in feet? Because I know you referenced feet.
Correct. Yeah. So it looks like with the changes as proposed, we would designate approximately 1,820 feet of roadway, kind of measuring sidewalk to sidewalk, not including the intersections. That accounts for roughly 100 vehicles in a, in a, an average length of about 16 feet, park bumper to bumper.
Okay. Thank you. So we're, we're losing approximately 100 spaces?
Correct. But it should be noted that at no time during the year do we have cars parked bumper to bumper from the Westerly Corporate Limits to Briarwood Street on both sides. This would just condense the parking to one side of the street.
Okay.
A lot of, this is Lisa, Trustee Gutierrez. Hi, Kevin. So I had my car hit, parked there, because I decided to park there. And that was a nightmare, and then I got blocked, I couldn't go anywhere. But what I noticed is, because I do hold hours there at the township, a lot of the people that were work, were parking back there were going to Famous, or to some of these other places, and there wasn't enough parking, and then with snow, so they were parking there. So it wasn't exactly our residents using that space.
No.
And then to that, we added the school buses, and there's a lot of kids that walk and a lot of people that shop, and they walk down that way. So this area has been a bit of a nightmare. But I, I found it, having to park there for some time, I find that it is more of people visiting the shops that will oftentimes not find spots, and they'll park on Briarwood.
No, that is correct. And I actually spent time going to the various businesses, including Famous Fades, and I, I showed them the proposed map from the agenda, and they were in agreeance. They did not have any, any problem. As long as their customers had a spot to park on Briarwood, they did not feel that that was asking too much. They agreed that it was a safety issue for both pedestrians and vehicles.
Can you, can you show where those, those cars might find a place to park other than that, when that parking's no longer available?
Correct. On the north side of the street here, we did, as I mentioned, we did designate, if you're familiar with that area, from McCool Avenue over where Fiesta Market is, to Astor Avenue. It's a short stent, about 116 feet long. We designated both the north and south side of Briarwood. There's no parking right there. If you're out there, that is a blind spot for a lot of the vehicles when they're going to turn. So if you take a look just, just above the east side of Astor Avenue on Briarwood, there is actually a crosswalk there along with a fire hydrant, which pushes the no parking back another 15 feet from the fire hydrant and another 20 feet from the crosswalk. So that pushes that back, which gives us that clear intersection, the clear line of sight for turning in, for pedestrians crossing the street.
But I, I, so where would people who were normally parked on Briarwood Avenue, where would they be able to park?
Anywhere on Briarwood Avenue on the north side.
What if there was all parking on both sides currently?
Oh, current, currently from the intersection?
That now, you're going to dis, that you're going to displace half of those cars that park on there. Where are they going to go to park?
So, so rather than being condensed, let's say, in this, this area right here, on cars parked on both sides, we're now going to have cars parked maybe twice the length on one side. So instead of having two cars side by side across the street, now the other one's going to be parked behind the first car.
Yeah. I should point out, most of the problem is from Astor to, you know, just east of Camelia to Dahlia. The issue, the, the problem with just trying to address that one section, though, is that we don't want to just push the problem further east. And so cutting off parking on the south side all the way down, you know, will stop us from just shifting the problem further. I, I will say that although we would be losing 110 or 115 theoretical spaces on the south side, there still would be, you know, 115 spaces on the north end that could be used. And I've never, we've never experienced parking volume like that. It's never usually more than six or eight cars on, on both sides of the street. The idea is just to alleviate the bottleneck, and by forcing them onto the north side, we, you know, we eliminate the bottleneck and the safety issue.
And parking is currently allowed on the north side?
Correct.
The north side of Briarwood also does not have any driveways, residential driveways, so that each driveway takes away between 20 and 40 feet of curb that people can actually park on. So in addition, we're adding that additional parking on the north side.
Thank you.
I know we had some residents that spoke. Give you an opportunity to, to speak at this time, because I'd like to hear your, your thoughts on this, whether this resolves or answers. Come on up.
I appreciate, you know, the explanation, the map. It looks perfect. Just honestly, just one thing, it kind of put me in the, because the parking that you took out from Astor Avenue, that's the, you know how you took very small portion?
Seventy feet, about three, three cars.
That's my house.
Oh, okay. And that's, that's where-
That's the only one. So that only space that he moved, like, that's my house. Which, okay, you know, I could park just on the other side, but yeah, that's the only kind of thing that wouldn't agree, but other than that, thank you, that's perfect. Timmy, just appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because you just go, they're very good, and that's literally my house.
Now we all know where you live.
So she was speaking about Astor, I'm going to speak about Briarwood. The, the whole side that will now be no parking, I just want to, well, okay, I can't speak for the whole side, but Astor and Briarwood, that, that is my corner house. You guys all know that now. It is 100% the barbers. It is, we're not taking away customer parking, we are not taking away residential parking. It is 100% the barbers. So maybe they should pay the village for another parking lot for their employees, because it is 100%, and I will bet my life on it, it is the barbers. That is my corner house, I deal with it every day, except Sunday when they're closed. Sunday, you could have a party in the street, but Tuesday, Wednesday, not so bad. Thursday, coming here, couldn't get down the street. Friday, Saturday, can't get down the street. It is the barbers. So we're not taking away cus, customer parking or residential parking on Briarwood. I can't sneak for her spot.
So are you saying you're okay with this?
I am saying I'm okay with it, but if she could have her spot back, that would be great. But I am perfectly okay, and I really truly appreciate the no parking on Briarwood. I truly do. Thank you.
Is, is there any way, and this may go beyond the scope of this amendment, and we might have to take it up in another time and, and, and session, that we could designate residential parking only so that we could deter the, the business owners or the business customers from taking up residential parking spaces?
Well, wait, I'm sorry. So when you guys were redoing the street and there was the temporary no parking signs, they didn't listen to that?
Okay.
The barbers.
Okay.
So I don't-
So you guys could make a lot of money there once you put those signs on.
You're going to be writing tickets. And it won't be the residents, it'll be the barbers.
Thank you, thank you.
So, thank you.
The, the Astor Avenue, when they come to get the, that's our food pantry for Hannover Township, but that gets busy.
It does.
And they park there across the street, which is fine.
But they park, and they're in and out, but they have their other parking, when we have, especially when we have elderly, we, we tell them, go park in our spots. Well, that's how I got my, my vehicles, because I had to put the ear in, you know? I left it out, the mirror. It's, we, we tell them, go park in the parking spots that we have designated, but even then, we've had to issue, go knocking on businesses and say, is that your car there? Can you move it so that our volunteers and our clients can park there? So that parking is set for that as well. So I have to agree it is that businesses taking up some of that parking there.
The businesses do. Generally, we also have this issue whenever Hannover Township has an event. Whenever they have an event, it's, Briarwood is highly congested, at least down to Dahlia, if not further, on both sides of the street. And it does get dangerous with people crossing the street.
Yeah. And, and we were talking with the welfare services in Hannover Township to see if the bit and brittle salary would, would let us use the parking for events like that, so they can have the parking, like if it's on a Saturday, and we're not, but that's another thing.
Okay. Thank you, Officer Penny.
Thank you, trustee.
Yes.
So we've looked at this area several times from a parking's perspective over the years, and it is a balancing act with the businesses. So the village has a parking lot over there, we actually have two. And so the township, though, leases those parking spaces. If the township didn't lease the parking spaces, they could be used for overflow for the businesses. So we've kind of balanced the need, and hopefully this will relieve some of the congestion in that area. But the, there really is not another area for the businesses and their employees to park as well. So we want those businesses to be successful as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll continue to monitor that situation, and I'm sure that if there's further action that's needed by this body, that we will certainly entertain that in the future. But hopefully, this is a, a good step toward alleviating that problem and giving you some confidence and peace that your car is not going to be sideswiped or your mirror is missing, and it's not going to be dangerous crossing the street for you and your families. So, but thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate your input. There's a motion on the, on the floor, and a second. Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Van Colly?
Yes.
Trustee Brighi?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
And Trustee Porter?
Yes.
She passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to look myself in the dials.
Wait, okay.
Board notes that trustee Kemper has stepped from the dials. 8817, motion to approve a purchase order to Safe Bill Illinois LLC in the amount of $50,550 for professional services pertaining to contracted inspections and authorize the village manager to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Madam clerk, would you call- Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez? Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
Item 8A18, move to pass an ordinance establishing special service area number ten in the village of Hannover Park, DuPage County, Illinois.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez? Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
And Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Item 8A19, move to waive competitive bidding and award the purchase of eleven Lion Ear Structural Firefighting Protective Equipment Ensembles, PPE, and eleven firefighting protective boots to Dingers Fire Company for an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-three and twenty-three dollars. A two-thirds vote of the corporate authority is required.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gutierrez? Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
And Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Item 8A20, motion to waive competitive bidding and approve the purchase of a cardiac monitor defibrillator from Stryker in the amount of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents and authorize the village manager to execute the necessary documents. A two-thirds vote of the corporate authority is required.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
And Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Item 8A21, motion to pass an ordinance authorizing a first amendment to the financial year FYI 2023 budget of the village of Hannover Park. A two-thirds vote of the corporate authority is needed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Move to approve warrant 11923 in the amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and four dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez? Trustee Porter?
Yes.
And Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Item 8A23, motion to approve warrant paid in advance, 1282022 through 1132023 in the amount of one million six hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez? Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
And Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
Item 8A24, move to approve November 22 P cards in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Husani?
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Kemper?
Yes.
Trustee Bencoli?
Yes.
And Trustee Priggi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item nine, the village manager's report.
I had two items under my report. The first is DMMC has provided their legislative action program for 2023. We don't ask that the village board approve the program. We just provide as information only. I know that Northwest Municipal Conference will have theirs out soon as well. So this is for information for the board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy, if you just wanna reach out to me, I'm happy to get answers from DMMC. The next item is the monthly treasures report for November of 2022. This is the monthly report. The annual one will be on your next agenda, the February 2nd agenda meeting, if you have any questions for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Corporation Council report.
Just hoping that the new year brings everyone here peace, joy, health, and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you. Village trustee report. What's that? I'm sorry. Village clerk, I'm sorry. Village clerk's report. How can I overlook the village clerk? I've been giving you two certificates today.
Just thank you to everybody who came to the tree lighting. It was obviously an amazing success. We already started planning for the next one. I did, for trustees, put the special events calendar in front of you. So just keep an eye out on our Facebook page and on our website for all of our special events coming up. We just have a lot of fun things that are going on and being planned, so come out and join us. That is all I have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Village trustee report. Having already given my report, I just would add that it was with great, great pleasure that the governor signed the assault weapons ban into law this month, and we're, we're very pleased with that. As you all know, that's something that this board had many discussions on. In our own particular situation with the, the range that opened here in Hannover Park, as we were advocating for them to not sell that weapon on their premises. And so it was very pleasing to me that our General Assembly and, and our governor have taken this step to deal with this problem. One of the things, though, that does concern me is that Hannover Park is, resides in multiple counties. And our DuPage County Sheriff has indicated that he's not going to support the enforcement of this particular law that has been passed and, and codified by our, our General Assembly and signed in by our governor. Now, as I understand it, his objection is the portion of the bill, which I, I, I agree makes some sense, that they would not go door-to-door seeking individuals who own these weapons and try to confiscate the weapons on a door-to-door search. I understand that the enforcement of that is problematic at best to, to, you know, to carry that out. But generally, the, the law that will ban the manufacture and the sale and the transfer of the weapon, I think, has the full-throated support of the General Assembly and the governor. And I just want to applaud the governor for taking this step. And there may be some amendments, or there may be some other things to clarify this bill and, and make it more amenable to the, to the rest of the community. But I think this is a great first step toward resolving this problem. Next is Trustee James Kemper.
Porter, you know I'm gonna rebut that, so, before I do, though-
I would expect nothing less.
Before, before I do that, though, and then in respect for Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday last Monday, I'd like to read a quote from Martin Luther King. "Freedom was never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed." Following with that, I have another quote from Abraham Lincoln. "The people are rightful masters of both Congress and courts, not to overthrow the Constitution, but to overthrow the men who pervert it." And with that, and with DuPage County Sheriff James Mendrick and the other eighty-plus county sheriffs in the state of Illinois, I stand in solidarity. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Kemper. Trustee Bencoli?
Yes, thank you. I was also able to attend a couple Martin Luther King events over the holiday weekend. And one event, I was in Springfield. And one event I was able to attend was, was a breakfast. And the keynote speaker was the great-great-grandson of the man who founded a town in Illinois. And the, the town's name is called New Philadelphia. The town has since been incorporated into another municipality. But this town was the first ever town that was founded by a free black man. So in the United States, this was the very first town held, or incorporated by a free black man. And I had no clue that that was in the state of Illinois. So I found that to be very interesting and did wanna share that piece of, of Illinois history. I was also able to attend the inauguration of our General Assembly, of our state legislature, state legislatures, in my work capacity and was happy to see Mayor Craig and Trustee Porter. And so inaugurations truly are special. And I attended the House inauguration, where I was able to hear House Speaker Chris Welch speak. But it was also good to see our fellow board members and to know that Hannover Park was very much represented in Springfield for those events. I want to give my sincere thanks and gratitude to Shubra and the Community and Economic Development Department for welcoming in another business into Hannover Park. So Zen Ramen and Grill just opened up. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, it is the only ramen restaurant in town, I think. So I'm very excited. So thank you, Shubra, for all that you do for our business community. I do know that, that new business is already aware of the, the, what is it? The facade, the facade improvement grant. And I know that there is, there are still dollars to be spent in that program. So if there are any business owners currently listening via YouTube, just a reminder that that is still an active program that can assist with the outside exterior of your business. And it is ongoing.
Can I, real quick, so with the restaurant, I was very pleased to see their menu. Now, on their menu, there are a couple of dishes that I have not had since I left Japan a long time ago. So I was pleased to see that. So I'm looking forward to going and having some memories brought back.
So I guess it's also authentic, so happy, happy to hear that. So. I, I attended the DMMC legislative dinner yesterday, but we've, we've kind of already discussed that. Trustee Porter mentioned that, so I won't go over that again. I understand that it's been advertised that the water and sewer increase will occur on May 1st. I want to thank our, our comms department for already communicating this increase, although I'm not in favor of it, and I think I've made my, my stance pretty clear on that. I, I do want to thank our staff for already communicating this change to our residents. I do know that we, we discussed our previous board meeting. We had a discussion around water. And I do know that we mentioned, or discussed the possibility of exploring an emergency, emergency fund of sorts. And so I would, before this May 1st change occurs, I would like to see some sort of information about what this fund would look like. You know, currently, you know, how many people are paying late fees? What is, what is that total annually? And, and maybe that could help kind of determine, if we were to create a fund, how, how much would we put in that initially? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a clear enough directive for whoever would take lead on that, to provide information to the board about what potentially a fund like that would look like, including dollar amounts for this potential fund.
So, the board has been provided with data requested for, on how, what late, you know, who's late, how much they owe, who's on a payment plan, how many payment plans there are. So, that can give us some idea of how much money, not necessarily based on need, but how many people are, you know, how much is delayed in being paid to the village. We have Linda Chambers, our Assistant Finance Director, has done some research already, based on the board's request of other communities and how they handle emergency funds or funds that are able to help in the area of utilities, especially water. So far, what we're finding is that they follow the same kind of general guidelines that some of the other utility assistance and some of the other conversations we've had on water, billing rates for the lie heap and those, those guidelines for meaning those qualifications would qualify for additional funding. So, we can, I would say that probably the best time to have this, like the conversation could, but, but that it'd be part of the budget process in terms of how much funding would go in there. We don't have, currently have additional fundings in this budget. But if the board wanted to have a conversation and provide for additional funding, it would have to be a budget amendment. I would just say that. The funds would have to be identified, and a budget amendment would need to be had for this, this current budget year.
Okay. So my concern is, is that when we talk about budgets, that's the end of the year, but this change is taking place on May 1st.
The change for the increase in fees is May 1st, yes. So if the board were to identify, want to identify funds to help assist, and it would be available May 1st, say, when this went in place, a budget amendment would need to take place.
Okay, so I guess, what I'm asking, before that amendment takes place, can someone provide us information in a formal way-
Yeah.
About what this would-
So we'll pull together, we can pull together the data that you requested, and I kind of identify. We can workshop, and we can bring some, you know, the format of some other communities and organizations and how they provide that as well. And if you know of any, if you know of any communities that are providing assistance, if you could send them our way, so we can look at them. We've looked at the ones we've been able to identify already.
So, so we agree, a workshop? Because I know we brought this up.
So-
So if we can put a workshop in the books?
So, do we need another workshop?
I want-
I think we work out.
If you, if you want another one, I-
I want to solidify.
I think we talked about this many times. And so if others believe that we need a workshop, then I'm for it. I-
Or something to solidify that this gets done? Because I've been talking about this for a long-
I have as well.
For about a year and a half.
The second meeting, if I'm worried, be good.
So, so is, is that an adequate amount of, of time to prepare this information? You know, in about a month?
February 16th. It should be, to have an, you know, and I will, I don't, I don't have anything on my calendar that shows we have a different workshop at that time, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing. So last but not least, I do just want to address some of the comments that were mentioned here tonight to Ms. Lopez and Ms. Valeno. Thank you for coming in and just expressing some of your concerns about parking. I'm glad that our board- I'm glad that our board was able to vote in the affirmative tonight to make that change. To Mr., I think, I believe his name is Suter. So I was wondering if we could maybe speak to why that, when that change took place and, and for the reasoning. So maybe Mr. Suter, maybe the additional information will assist Mr. Suter. Sutter.
Yeah, I believe, I believe he left.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but I can speak to that. What, the, the change that was made to the roadway on County Farm Road was to address the S curve and the fatal crashes that we were having. And so extensive work by our SEP unit and the county was done to analyze what changes could be made to the roadway to stop the fatal crashes, which were occurring, you know, about every 18 months to two years, we were having another fatal crash on the S curve. And so recommendations such as roadway surface, illumination of the roadway, and then the number one recommended change based on the traffic study was to lower the speed limit from 40 to 30. That's, that's done about, and I don't have it right in front of me, but that's done about, I want to say, four to five years ago now. And since those changes were made, we've had zero fatal crashes on the S curve. So I would strongly recommend that we keep it as is.
And keep, I'd like to, because on that S curve, when it was 40, people were doing 50.
And it's dangerous not only when it snows, but when it's wet, rain.
When it rains.
Correct. Absolutely.
It's not just snowy conditions. And, and I know of a young, young individual that lost their life on that S curve. So it's, it's, we, we actually petitioned for it. Board actually petitioned for that 30 mile an hour speed limit there. So, yeah.
Thank you. And if Mr. Sutter is listening, I hope that explanation answered your questions in regards to that change. Ms. Hillary Schneider, I want to also thank you for providing your comments tonight about your request on the noise and traffic study. I do also, I do believe that you attended our last meeting and due to just some confusion, I understand that you weren't able to speak. And so I can't speak on behalf of others, but I would like to just personally apologize. We always just want to make sure that our residents that do come to our, our meetings are given the ability to speak. I think it's because we had someone filling in and mistakes were made. But nevertheless, I do just want to apologize. I also remember that Trustee Husseini did attend a previous meeting in which the noise and traffic study was discussed, requested. And I don't know if we have looked further into this from a staff standpoint. What, what actions have, have taken place?
So as part of the findings of fact from the Development Commission, we will be addressing some of the other questions that were raised at the Development Commission. Noise and traffic were two of the other items that weren't necessarily on the Development Commission for action. Those were variances for setback and height. But there were other issues raised regarding the fire station. So we will address those in the, the report that's provided to the board and the residents will be able to see that on the, on our website. They'll be able to see that. It's posted the Friday before the meeting.
So the Friday before the next meeting?
Correct. You can see the staff's analysis and the consultants. So we'll, we'll pull all of that together and have that information. Then it'll be on the agenda and you're, you're free to come and speak again during that day.
It's February 2nd, right?
February 2nd, yes.
So just to clarify, it will be discussed at our next board meeting?
That's right.
It will be on the February 2nd meeting, yes.
Agenda.
Agenda.
Right. Okay. Okay, that concludes my report.
And for clarification, what will be on the agenda is a motion, a request for a motion to approve the two variances regarding the fire station, one being height and one being setback. If the board wishes to just, we will have additional information about some of the questions that were raised at Development Commission. It will be up to the board whether you want to discuss those or not.
But I do remember when there was a summary from that meeting, the two topics were not listed on that summary at that time, after that meeting. So are they, did they put on now?
I'm not clear as to.
There was a summary that was put on the web that listed, or maybe it was an email that was received that talked, it talked about a summary of everything that had been discussed that night. And the, my request for a noise survey and for a traffic study was not on that list. So I'm asking if you are adding it to whatever that original list was.
So to clarify, Ms. Schneider, I, I believe that what you're referring to was a previous open house meeting?
It was a meeting that was to, it was a specific meeting to talk about the setback requirement and to present that information. So it wasn't, so it was a separate meeting than this, than the general board.
Yes.
And at that time, I came up, that was when I had gotten a letter in the mail, because I'm within 250 feet of the Pocole location. And that was when I came in, I asked, well, are you doing a noise study? Because, because it's affecting so many people and also the traffic, because I know that the traffic is like a shit during rush hours. And so then a summary was provided of that meeting and all the discussion and neither of those items were on that summary. So what I'm asking is, since it sounds like you are presenting that information on the previous meeting, I'm asking, mind your topics, will be added to that?
I think two things are crossing because there has been no summary or minutes or findings of fact that have been distributed regarding the Development Commission yet. That will be what's coming to the board on February 2nd. What you might have seen was, and I think Trustee Bancoli and the board members have circulated questions they have received from residents. And we have been trying to answer those questions and post them on our website and distribute them to the residents. So maybe you saw one of those lists of questions. They're on our website and whether, I can't remember whether noise and traffic were included in any of those.
So I will just say that there have been times where I personally have distributed the answers to the questions that I've received, but those are from the notes that I've taken. And so if that's something that was left off, then, then, then that is, that's a mistake that I made. And so if that's something that I missed, then I do apologize. But I've, I've tried to take copious amounts of notes just to, just so I can gather all the questions, all the concerns, all the thoughts on this development. But one thing to note, so the information that we're going to be receiving our next meeting, is that information also be, being voted on the same night?
Yes, the board will be asked to vote on the variance and the recommendation from the Development Commission at the next meeting. Regarding the variance on height and setback.
So how would we, so really quickly, so then how would we vote on this if we, if we haven't? So, so I guess, why would we move forward with a vote if we haven't already decided whether or not we would move forward with a study? Why would those two things occur on the same night?
The Development Commission, we're building a fire station. And in order to build the fire station as designed, I, I mean, this is again on the next. I was, I don't have all my notes prepared. This is not on the agenda, but our process is that something will go to the Development Commission. It was a public meeting. The residents could come to the public meeting. Some of them did. From the Development Commission, they make a recommendation. They've made a recommendation that will be outlined in the findings of fact with all of their reasoning and rationale and analysis. Those two items are what the board is being asked to approve. It has, it does not, it, the Development Commission did not discuss noise. It was raised at the meeting, but it was not on their agenda. And a traffic study was not part of what the Development Commission was asked to look at.
I, I'd like to just call point of order. I think we've exceeded beyond the scope of the agenda for, for tonight's meeting. We're actually discussing agenda items that will be properly discussed and clarified at our next meeting. I would ask that my fellow trustees and board members would reserve any questions, further questions on this issue. Submit them to the Development Commission, submit them to the village manager to receive response. And then let's address this formally at, at our next meeting.
And I would say, don't submit them to the Development Commission, but if you could send them to, to me and then I will make sure that we try to answer all the questions that.
And then we will come forward and have a robust discussion on this at our next board meeting. But trustee report is not the place for us to, to entertain items that are going to be on the next, next agenda meeting. We've exceeded the scope of this meeting.
What I was trying to explain was Julie, I mentioned it clearly.
Sorry, can I just respond to that? So just to clarify, I, I do just want to clarify that in our trustee reports, we're allowed to talk about things that we've done, we're allowed to ask questions, and we're also allowed to respond to resident comments. And so the purpose of responding to the comment wasn't to try to skip procedures or to talk about things that haven't been presented yet. It, it was to address the concerns of our residents that have been brought forward.
Proceed, proceed. If you feel the need to, then proceed, that's fine.
Right. And so it technically still was a part of my report. And so I, I do just want to clarify that, that I'm not, that this isn't something being put forward so that I can go out of order. It was really to address a resident concern. So I will conclude my report there.
Yeah. And, and the only, and Trustee Bancoli, please understand, the only question I had is that you were asking questions of, of the, the staff and administration that they've not had a chance to explore and to dissect and provide cognitive answers, you know, very detailed answers that I think our residents deserve. And so I, I don't want them answering off, you know, without having the, the opportunity to do due diligence into these issues, because I think our residents deserve that. We brought the issue up. I think our, our staff has listened. They see what, what you're referring to, what you'd like to see. And, and I think they'll be very responsive in, in how they reply to that. So by all means, I understand your concern and I represent, respect you for being an advocate for our, our village, trust, residents. And we'll, we'll proceed in that manner. So it's all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Priggy.
I'll report.
Trustee Husseini.
Okay. Happy New Year to everyone. And thank you so much to all the participants who participated today in Town Hall and voiced your opinions. It's very important. Most of the time, this hall is empty when there is, you know, there's so much important discussion that goes on. So community involvement is very important and I really thank you so much for coming out tonight. One thing that I could share tonight with everybody, everybody, including the resident of Hannover Park and the board and everything, everybody is, you know, staff put on a lot of time to prepare something and sometimes we miss it and I'm one of that. But I wanted to share this, that Business Matters Newsletter goes out every month. And that you could skim through within 30 seconds and spend time on two minutes on topic that you're interested in. But that has a lot of meaningful information on it. I know we get a lot of emails throughout the day and we can easily bypass it. And this is something I have been put on many times on the spot by Shubra, so I started looking at it. So while, things that I want to share, a few things, Trustee Bancoli already shared, so thank you so much for bringing that up. Zen, place that, a restaurant grill that opened yesterday was a grand opening. I wasn't able to attend a lot of things last week. I've been under the weather. And now this week, I'm catching up with all the appointments that got canceled last week. So I apologize for not showing up for that. And Economic Development Commission that I missed. But Economic Development has been very active and talk about the current topics that really affects the small business in Hannover Park. And one of them have been the signage that, and also how businesses can promote themselves. When they come new to Hannover Park and nobody knows they opened, how can they put signs? And what signs, what kind of sign? This topic needs to be talked about more. We already have everything put into place. I recommend that Shubra and the Economic Development Commission to come up with something that it could be overview and, and a basic to understand small businesses that they have opportunity to advertise their businesses, but there is limits, there are permits. But what are they, how they can access? So that is in the Business Matter as well. That was covered, that topic and a link. And that link is so robust and takes you to that really nitty gritties of what, what can and cannot be done. And once you get there, you can actually email and share that information. That's great.
Right.
Just to have that. And these newsletters that I'm talking about, anybody could sign up. If you go to the village website, there are so many other committees that happens throughout the village and you could sign up for what you are interested in. And you will get emails once they are updated. So now in that Business Matter newsletter, there's also covering businesses that are nominated for Business of the Year 2022. And there are six nominations. And a winner will be announced in our dinner, February 9th, annual dinner, our dinner. So that's something to look forward to. Minimum wages are $13 now, just randomly, I brought that up. It's in the newsletter as well. But I think Illinois has adopted $15, which is great. I think, you know, that, you know, I'm seeing that in all the employees that I hire. So that's great to have that minimum wages go up. So everybody could live a comfortable life. Facade grants, Trustee Bancoli has spoken about it. It's still up. It's, you know, you can submit your request to uplift, you know, face of the outside and also includes landscaping part of it, 30% can be used for landscaping as well. So businesses are highly encouraged to participate and submit requests. Next level, you know, this is a group of people that comes together to help small businesses where their expertise are, to voluntarily offer them counseling and, you know, get them to the next level, be their next success story. So Village also participates and Village of Hannover Park, our own Dr. Shaw has participated in that. And she presented her business and what model she has and then submitted a request to be a participant in Next Level, so that's great. So, you know, people are participating. Hannover Park.
What business is that? Did you say the business?
Cairo. Cairo backed place that we have, Dr. Shaw.
Oh, Dr. Shaw, okay.
So one thing that I want to encourage small businesses and Hannover Park to join Chamber of Commerce. It's $240 for a year or they could do monthly $20 to be part of. So we join with Bartlett and make it more, I know, informative and Chamber of Commerce that it brings in more resources when we join power. So hopefully that will benefit the Hannover Park businesses as well. So I highly encourage, you know, people to, to discuss with small businesses, to participate in that. I have said this many times at the Economic Development Meeting, that only if the small businesses in Hannover Park knew how much Village thinks about small businesses and want to do things. So I have actually recommended Shubra and the team to invite small businesses to our Economic Development Meeting and be active role and talk about what issues they're going through and what, how Village can help. That will be a direct communication. Hopefully that happens in the future meetings. So we are kind of open for it and want to invite and talk about. are kind of open for it and want to invite and talk about what we can do for small businesses. I think that concludes my report.
Right. I have a real quick question in regards to your report, and it's on signage. Do we have a temporary sign ordinance for grand openings?
Yes.
Does it allow like the feather banners?
They have to come in and take a permit for that, and all the details of what they can and cannot do will be provided.
Right. And what's the time period that they can have that?
30 days.
30 days?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm kind of wondering about the, the feather banners, no?
No.
Okay. They're not allowed.
Some are not allowed, some are allowed, but whatever is allowed, they could discuss that when they're taking the permit.
Very good.
So, you know, they could come on and talk to Shubra and the team.
We had a very, very robust discussion a few years ago about signage.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things that the board almost unanimously was against, was those feathery waving signs, grand opening signs. Thank you, trustee Husseini.
Well, I think I answered all his questions. Any brownie pounds there? Okay, thank you. All right. Concludes my report.
Trustee Gutierrez.
Congratulations, Said, you did good in your report. You're doing well with economic development, I'm so glad you're on there.
Somebody noticed, thank you.
Yes, I noticed, you're very long report. I have to tell you, I'm so happy to see people here. It lets us know that you are aware of problems and you become the eyes and the ears of, of the community, because we can't be everywhere. You know, we have full-time jobs and we're working and we have family, and so we can't be everywhere at once. And I just happen to experience, you know, the issues that you, you great ladies are dealing with, so I knew that, but I appreciate that and we hope we see more, so. Really quickly, the Historic Committee, my favorite committee, is meeting next week, January 24th at 6:00 PM. CIGC has not met, but I'm happy to report that we have two new applicants, so I'm waiting for the mayor to sign off on that, so we're getting young folks involved. I'm very excited about that as well. POC, as you know, as I said, with COVID, we expected to start seeing overcrowding and issues with housing. And I got to thank our police department, our fire department, who's been working with our nonprofit to find a way to let folks know, these are your rights and, and you don't have to live like this. But even in Hanover Park, we are experiencing overcrowding and a lot of abuse of newcomers to the area. So POC is now hosting legal clinics for renters, they feel that their rights have been violated, and these are free, and these are specifically focusing on Hanover Park in this area. So I'm, I'm hoping people will take advantage of that. And then finally, you know, it's no, it's no secret that we got buses from Texas beginning in August of last year with newcomers and asylum seekers, and I've been knee-deep in this for some time. I'm starting to see the beginning of the end slowly, but it's happening. And I want to tell you that some of these families have chosen Hanover Park, because we are America's global village. And so they are finding apartments, they are working, I'm very proud of them. But all of this has happened only because of the strength of the relationship we have with our townships. I am so happy to say that from Wheeling Township all the way to Hanover Township, we were able to provide welcoming bags and services and coats and transportation, and we just said, welcome. And that, that makes me so proud that Hanover Park was leading that way, that our community center was leading in this effort. And so I just want to thank you for that. I also want to publicly thank Senator Castrell, Representative Crespo's office for collecting the new coats and jeans and gym shoes and everything else. And I want to thank El Centro de Información, a fellow sister as in Illinois, welcoming center for the clothing as well. They did a great job in welcoming them and working with us together. And then thank you Mission Church for creating a core memory for newcomers at the Shelter Hotel. When they woke up Christmas morning, it was unlike anything that they've ever seen. And we have over 50 children, I don't know how they just survived, on their parents' shoulders in the Panama jungle, drinking water, sometimes eating grass. But we made their Christmas, and that was because of the work of our city clerk. So I just want to say thank you so much, and we did great last year, and I can't wait to see how much better we're going to do this year. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gutierrez. There's no executive session scheduled, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gutierrez?
Yes.
Trustee Porter?
Yes.
Trustee Tempur?
Yes.
Trustee Bancoli?
Yes.
Trustee Priggy?
Yes.
And trustee Husseini?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We really do appreciate the interest that you show by coming to our meetings. So thank you very much.